Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to this Select Board meeting. Let me get that mic on here so I don't get in trouble with Val. October 10th, glad to have your board. I don't have extensive comments. I do make mention of under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being recorded. I don't have any acknowledgements or recognitions. I don't know if the other members of the Select Board do tonight. All right, welcome aboard. And a couple of things here. We do not have an executive session tonight. And the next meeting is two weeks, not two weeks from tonight, two weeks from yesterday. We'll be back on the regular Monday schedule. Okay, with that, I think you all have copies of the agendas. If not, they're up here. The first item on the agenda is grouping licenses/permits. And 1A is the preliminary approval of 2024 Common Victular Licenses for Countryside Market and Bootleg Barbecue. Jim, could you give us some background here?
Yeah, these two were just left off the list at the last meeting, so this is procedural, easy yearly renewal. Recommend approval.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Are we gonna, does that motion include both?
Yes.
Okay, so noted. Any further comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain of that one.
Okay, one of four in favor, one of abstention, no opposed. Thank you. That motion carries. Next item is B, a request from the Holy Ghost Club, 179 Sodom Road, for one-day liquor licenses for the following dates. There are two, Friday, October 13th, this Friday, fried clam dinner, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then Saturday, October 21st, memorial event, and that's from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Jim, anything here that we should take note of?
No, these are similar to what they've had all year long. We do have the police reports in, they're favorable. I'd recommend approval.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? No abstentions? That motion carries also. Thank you. Now we have the next category, of which there are two items. 2A is a request from Chris Gonzales, Highway Surveyor, to appoint Adam Estrella as Special Equipment Operator. Jim, is any of these over here this evening?
I spoke to Chris Gonzales this afternoon. He's been trying to get in touch with Mr. Estrella. He has not been able to get in touch with him this week. He does want to confirm with him before the appointment's made, so if we could, our table is, so continue it to the next meeting.
We will do that. For obvious reasons. Next item is a request to appoint Richard Smith to Police Chief Preliminary, to the Police Chief Preliminary Screening Committee. Chief Smith is with us tonight, and we welcome his interest in being on the committee. It's a very important position for us, and I'm excited about that. So what is the pleasure of the committee?
I'll move.
I will second it. I know Chief Smith, and if I may call you Rick, do you say anything to our group here tonight? Tell us about your background? I know.
You have to go to a microphone if you do that.
They should know that I'm gonna be tired so long I forget on this one.
That happens.
First of all, before I go anything, I want to offer my congratulations to the Fire Department. The outgoing chief and the incoming chief, I'm going to assume. But you made a right choice. Chief Baldwin, I'll, I'll, that. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of more, spend more of my time with the community and with this department. I've, I've been, as it said in my letter, I've been in law enforcement for 46 years. I have an extensive background of serving not only my community, but on a national and international level. So I think I can bring a lot to the committee and to help Chief Pelletier and the committee as they transition into this position. My position, and I've said this for the Chair Brewer, is that, no disrespect to the Fire Department, but I think that the appointment of a police chief is probably one of the most important appointments any city or town can make. Because in many ways, the Police Department is the face of your community. Most people have interactions, hopefully good, with the police and anybody else in your community. I think it's a very important piece. So to be able to be part of that, I think I'm on it. So having said that, this is not about me, this is about the committee, and hopefully the committee will make the right choice and present you with candidates that you people can, at some point, appoint. Thank you.
Gee, thank you. Okay, this position would be voting, a voting position, I take it, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. Any further comments? You made the motion seconded, I recall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Chief, and thank you for being willing to participate in this important endeavor. Thank you. Okay, the next group of items would be action items, 3, Section 3. 3A is an interview with Deputy Dan Baldwin, as recommended by the Fire Chief Search Committee, for the position of Westport Fire Chief. And what we're talking about is the position here that would be effective January 7th, 2024. And that would be at the retirement of Chief Legenda. Jim, could you give us any further background on this, before we proceed?
Sure, so we had a search committee that was appointed by the modest selectmen. We posted the position in-house. The committee interviewed the one candidate that applied, Deputy Chief Daniel Baldwin. The committee felt, and there's a recommendation from the committee in your packet, committee felt that it was important to post the position in-house first to see if there was interest among the current staff. The committee received one application from Deputy Chief Daniel Baldwin. Mr. Baldwin's application and resume were reviewed by the committee, and he was interviewed on September 19th, 2023. The committee believes Deputy Chief Baldwin is more than qualified for the position. His education, experience, and professionalism would provide the leadership needed to oversee this department. The committee unanimously recommends to the Select Board that Deputy Chief Baldwin be considered for the position of Fire Chief. Committee members were, Select Board member, Mr. roulette, Cindy Brown from the Finance Committee, myself. She's a Fire Chief from Berkeley, and I can't think of his name offhand.
Kevin Potruch.
Kevin Potruch, who was great. He came in with a number of questions and gave us some good leadership on that committee. And Chief Legenda also served as a non-voting member.
Did the committee recommend any format here, or is it simply us to ask any question we feel appropriate?
So the committee was charged with recommending a candidate to, or candidates to, the Board of Selectmen. And this was unanimous decision of the committee.
Okay. Well, I think we should go through the process here of having a brief interview with the candidate and get some questions answered. I don't have a format. I do have a few questions of my own. If we don't have a lot of questions, and so be it, that's not a bad thing. But I would invite Deputy Baldwin to come to the table, introduce yourself, we know who you are, but for the record.
Dave Baldwin.
Right here, of course, yeah.
How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you. Good to have you here tonight.
Thank you. So my name is Dan Baldwin. I am a lifelong resident of the town of Westport. Been on the Fire Department since the age of 18. I was appointed to a career position in 2004, to Lieutenant in 2011, to Deputy Fire Chief in 2018. Here I sit in 2023. A little bit of background on my education. Graduated Westport High School, associate's in Fire Science at Bristol Community College, a bachelor's degree and master's degree in Public Administration and Fire Science from Anamaria College. I maintained a 4.0 grade point average throughout. I'm a paramedic, been a paramedic since 2004. This is extensive annual mandated training that myself and all the members of my department go through. In the fire service, as far as my training and education goes there, I'm certified to the level of Chief Officer III, which is currently the highest level offered by the state of Massachusetts. In lieu of Chief Officer IV, which the state does not offer, I successfully completed a 14-week program held in conjunction with UMass, University of Massachusetts, a Chief Officer Management Program, which is considered Department of Fire Service's capstone program for the Chief Officer Program. In addition to those highlights, those major Provo certifications, as you can see here, these are all certifications that I've attained over the years. I mean, scheduled actually for a class coming up, so education never ends. And I enjoy it. It's, you know, it's always new to stay engaged in what's going on, of their tactics, strategy, thought processes. The most recent class I took was with about 40 other Fire Chiefs throughout the state. We had a Worcester Fire Chief with us, and we had a Fire Chief from Oakham. Had 1,400 residents in his town, and the selectmen literally knocked on his door and just asked, we know you're a Fire Chief in Massport, would you like to be one here? So it was a really, you know, diverse class. We learned a lot. Guest speakers ranged from Fire Chiefs, Police Chiefs, lawyers, town administrators, Select Board members. So it was, it was pretty intense. I enjoyed it. I've been involved in numerous changes over my career. I've been ahead of a lot of different endeavors. Standard Operating Committee was completely revamped of our policies and procedures, rules and regulations. I continue to do that today. Streamlined communication, shared documents has become a huge improvement for us. Information is shared in real time, and the members are always kept up to, up to date on where we are, where we want to go. I'm a strong believer in input from my members. It's not all about Fire Chief or the command staff. We're a department. We operate as a team. And I'm eager to continue on with what I've been doing for about 28 years. Still got a long career ahead of me.
Well, we, we hope that is the case as well. And thank you for those introductory comments. If I may just ask a couple of open-ended questions. I remember, it wasn't too long ago, but six years it was, when I was on the Finance Committee and we were trying to figure out what is the correct number of staff positions in the Fire Department, and we came to sort of an agreement, all of us, the Select Board and Finance Committee, that we needed, I don't know, three or four more staff members. However, because of our financial situation, we haven't been able to do that. So my question is, that being the case, operating with short staff, almost by definition, how does somebody like you, in the new position of Chief, how do you deal with that? What change, what things do you do differently, or what do you cut if you have to cut, and what do you do different?
To cut would be very difficult. As you know, we're already at, we're already at bare bones. My, my job and my plan, and if you monitor us on social media, is to put the information out to the public. The voters just spoke with the override. It's clear that the budget is what we have. We will continue to pursue safer grant opportunities. But as we all know, we can't manage a department of our size and with our level of service, which is life safety through grants. But as Chief, I would continue to educate the public in what we're doing. There are other options potentially, just part-time employees on the weekends and things like that, when during our busier times. One of the things that I had initiated this summer, which, which did work out for us, was using overtime funding. We did put on an extra person on the weekends, so that's something that we felt we had to do. We dropped to four often on the weekends, and, and far too often, our stations were empty. No one there. Getting somebody to come back in on a weekend at a moment's notice is very difficult. That's been an increasing problem for us. So we had no choice but to spend some funds. It was a minimal amount of funds, and just having that one, that one body in the station. When we did have simultaneous calls, which is another statistic that I'm tracking, which is eye-opening when we see how, how often two, three, four, today we had three calls. I was on the ambulance today myself, like, you know, and it's not something typically Chief or Deputy does, but I transported a patient today and, and was on our backup truck. But it would be to continue to engage our staff, to explain to them the importance of having, being available for callbacks. We have talked about some ideas that, that could, could need to be brought up through contract negotiations, so I'm not sure how deep I want to go on that, but potentially having someone on call. One of the biggest problems that we have, so just to give you a little bit of a picture, you know, both stations empty, firefighters home, they're off-duty. They could be home with their kids, they could be, it's their personal time, they could be mowing their lawn. Call drops, we have to get them to stop what they're doing. One idea that I have had is to potentially put them on, on a call status. So for example, I'll use a completely different line of work, but St. Anne's Hospital, one of our members is a nurse. He works in the cardiac unit. He's on call, so he's paid a minimal amount of money just to be available. And somebody comes in having an MI, heart attack, he has to be available. But he can still be home, he can still have his off time, he can still, can't, you know, can't take off and go grocery shopping, but he has to be available. But he can have his personal life. That's, that's an idea that I've thought of. Other than that, it's a difficult question, because the budget is the budget. And we have, and we've done a very good job, in some say we've done too good of a job, doing more with less. We always make it work, but I think that's through our operating procedures, our policies, our conversation, our quarterly offices, meetings. Again, being engaged with our, with our members. We completely changed the way we dispatch. All the calls are now sent to your phone, so even the off-duty members, they have an idea what's going on. Whereas before, if you didn't have your radio on your hip, or you had bad reception, you didn't know what was happening. So we've taken what we can, try and, you know, put that information back out to the members. The other issue that you have, even with regards to staffing, is even if you give me the money, I can't guarantee I can even get someone to come. And that's statewide. It's not, it's actually nationwide. It's not just Westport. It's not the way it used to be. You know, I fought to get this job, and now, you know, it's, you just don't know how many applicants you're gonna get. But, you know, that comes through, you know, morale, treating your employees fairly and with respect, and recognizing the job that they do, again, being a proud, a proud department, which, which we are. But you want, you want people on the outside to say, I want to go work at Westport Fire. I like what they have to offer. So there's, there's a lot of challenges in that, but, you know, again, continue educating the public, constantly review our policies and procedures, and just do what we've always done is, is the best we can.
You mentioned the ambulance. I was gonna ask about that. I had an uncle who was a firefighter, and the ambulance service in the town was privatized, so he was focused on fighting fire. And, but now, now it's different, and the ambulance service that we provide is a big ticket item for this town, and a very, very important one. But as we go through this budget process, we have to look at every area where we could save money. So what are some of the pros and cons if we were to consider to privatize it? What kind of peril would we be in? What do we lose? What do we gain?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of thought and a lot of conversation on fire-based EMS. Obviously, I am pro-fire-based EMS. I did work for a private company, and I still talk to some of the members of that private company, and we share information. I have no disrespect to any member of a private ambulance service whatsoever. From, from my aspect, fire-based EMS is beneficial in many ways. First of all, it's the continuity of administration. Instead of having two administrators run two different entities, you have one. So when you have two entities operating out of one firehouse, there can be issues. When you have fire-based EMS operating out of one firehouse, you have one administrator. There's one person to answer to, there's one person to solve the problems of the day, whatever it may be. There's also continuity amongst the first responders, meaning the firefighters. Sometimes, for example, maybe it's a lift assist, or maybe it's a vehicle extrication. Something that requires, again, teamwork, and not to say that we can't work as a team with a private service, but our department, I know the capabilities of all my members. I know who I'm gonna point to and say, hey, start extricating that patient. You start setting up the ambulance, because he's my go-to person. I, I'm, we know each other, we know our staff, we know our capabilities. With a private service, there's extreme turnover. You never know who's gonna be in your town on that day, regardless of the promises that may be made at the outset of their offering to provide you the service. As you know, Westport is an awesome, beautiful town, but it's very tricky to find many of the addresses, especially River Road, 217, 219, Tickle Road. I was down in that area today. My neighborhood in particular is very difficult to find. So when you have a fire department like ours, with members who have been here, live here, work here, basically almost their whole lives, in many instances, we know this town to the back of our hand. An address comes up, we know, for example, today, went to one address, we knew we needed an extra person to help carry that patient. So there's, there's just that information, that wealth of information that we have and that we share across the board that helps us, you know, really deliver the, the best quality care that we, we can. There's also continuity in training. For example, you know, if you have two sub-entities, maybe they have two different medical directors. We work under the direction of a medical director, a doctor, who meet with us monthly to review our rounds. You know, continuing the training, making sure that we're all on the same page. We don't have one instructor giving their interpretation of a standard operating procedure or a protocol. So I think there's, there's benefits in that. It can just operating as one unit, one team, and I, I would absolutely be 100% supportive of maintaining and continuing to be a fire-based EMS service. I think we provide an excellent service.
My last question is, what can the Select Board do under your administration, let's say, your leadership, to support the Fire Department?
Well, the Select Board's done, done quite a bit, including the town administrator, who worked with us extensively during our ARPA funding. Really brought us up to speed with some of the vehicles that desperately needed to be replaced. Through the Select Board, we did, we get one additional member. So, you know, as you know, the plan is for have all four operating groups to be at six. We're currently at five on three of the groups, and only one group has six, but that was with the help of the Select Board and the town administrator. That was maybe two or three years ago, right, right after COVID began, if I recall. So that was a huge help. So continuing to, to listen to us, to, to understand, to ask questions, so you have the knowledge to share with, you know, the taxpayers and the voters that may come to you. We, again, a wide open book. I, I'm, my last FinCom presentation was very expensive, expensive. It was very extensive with, you know, the detail, yeah, probably expensive. With the details that I can provide, what's been one of my goals is to really put our statistics out there. And my log and the way I do that drives some of the members crazy, because I'm asking for a lot of information, but I explain to them why it's beneficial. How many transports are we doing? How many simultaneous calls are we doing? How many fire-related calls? It's not just building fires, it's not just smoke and fire. It's everything from carbon monoxide, gas leaks, motor vehicle crash, fluid spills, you know, electrical issues. There's numerous things that we handle throughout the course of the day. But Select Board, I mean, we have, we have a, what I consider to be a very strong working relationship. And what I've, you know, Chief Legenda has said to me that the Select Board is approachable. And we'll just continue to maintain that, that positive relationship and be in, be in contact and in touch with each other often. I'm always available to gather stats and statistics to, to help make a decision on what we need. And we'll continue to demonstrate that need, and that we are also good stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. And I think that we are. We, we try and save wherever and whenever we can, and that's kind of how we're, continue to operate.
You can be sure you have our support as well?
Thank you.
I've seen you doing all the talking, so other questions?
So one thing you didn't mention with privatized services is that they frequently have EMTs that are stopping those services and not paramedics. So literally lifesaving rescue coming when you get a paramedic over an EMT. I wonder if you can talk a little bit more about kind of mutual aid and coordination with nearby communities on things like emergency preparedness and disaster planning and things like that. Can you talk a little bit about what you've done to work with other communities, or what you think we should be doing to work with other nearby communities to make sure that we're supporting each other?
Sure. So we have a, an excellent relationship with all of our mutually partners, including Dartmouth EMS, which is a private service. We are on the same page with them as far as what we can offer. They are, I speak with many of those chiefs frequently. They are well aware of our, I don't want to say shortfalls, but our inability to respond and reciprocate. Mutually, it's supposed to be exactly that, one for one. You know, obviously, the city of For River demands a little bit more than the town of Westport, maybe just by the sheer number of people that they have. But we are, again, if you want to talk about fire-based EMS, we have held some joint training sessions with surrounding communities. District 3 I work closely with. We already have a mutually agreement with regards to Route 195. As you know, we've had some pretty horrible accidents out there. And speaking with Chief Aruda and Deputy Chief Borges, we established a, a policy. It's automatic aid prompted by us through our protocols, when we have an accident on, in certain areas of 195, where the, a lot of times, having to turn and get to the other side of the highway creates a significant delay. So we've, we've established written policies with Dartmouth, for example, in regards to automatically calling them. And if, if we didn't need them, we cancel them and turn around and vice versa. We actually responded last week about 3 o'clock in the morning to assist Dartmouth in a crash on 195. So we already, we do have some, some pretty solid policies in place with our mutually partners. One of the things I have up and coming, and I've already spoken with a couple of the surrounding chiefs, if anybody didn't see on social media, we had a helicopter land in the parking lot the other day. That was kind of a, that wasn't our planning, that was MedFlight calling me saying, hey, we want to try out the new spot. Do you mind if we land in about 20 minutes? I'm sure.
We're not.
That's how I noticed you guys.
Yeah, but, yeah, they had a pilot in training. He didn't even know until he was on the ground that it was not a real call. So, but we're gonna, we're gonna invite surrounding towns in on that, because, to be honest with you, for mutually, for MedFlight calls, for example, it may not be us establishing the MedFlight zone in our town. It may be mutually coming in. I've talked with Little Compton and Chief Aruda with regards to active shooter. Hopefully, it never happens, obviously, but in the event it does, we've already established agreements and an understanding on what we expect from them in the event, God forbid, that was ever to occur. So our, our policies are there. As far as, one of the things that came up during my original interview with the Fire Chief Search Committee was the EMA and the Emergency Management portion of that. We do have, through MEMR and state-level and county-level entities, there are some policies in place. But one of the things that I'd like to do is develop a set of policies specifically for Westport. And in those policies, it'll, it'll dictate who we call as far as EMA and Emergency Management goes. Our EMA division already has a very strong working relationship with For River's EMA Division. They work with them frequently. So in regards to mutually, we, we do have some pretty solid agreements in place. We work well with our, with our partners coming in. And they understand our needs, and we understand their needs. Tivon came in today. We send an engine, or one person usually in the engine, or, or the car, just to assist. So we, we maintain that relationship as sort of as a courtesy as well. I think there's, you know, that's, it's necessary. I know that some people don't like when our ambulance goes out of town. But again, we need them to come in, so we, we have to reciprocate. We're all sort of in, in the same boat. New Bedford, you know, For River, Tivon. You never know. You never know when, you just never know. I mean, we just won away three or four calls, and all within 20 minutes, so.
Any other questions?
If the committee has any, then I'll dive in a little bit. So just so everybody knows, he did an excellent job with his resume. We have details. We had letters from the budding chiefs, Little Compton, Dartmouth, District 3. As you could tell, the lieutenant also answers questions. He's got his head into what he's doing. You didn't get any ums, ahs, yes or no answers, which sometimes I like to do, yes or no, but he goes into it in depth, and he's really, he's got his head into a job, which I think is a good thing. We had 17 questions. We asked him. He summarized a lot of it. But, you know, we're impressed with his commitment, not only to the town, but his commitment to the job. He, just like the board just went around, he had the answer to every question and went into an in-depth answer, just was the yes or no, which, which is impressive. He also is helping get the word out through social media and whatnot, so we think he had all the qualifications. He's well-spoken, and he can do a good job.
Okay. Yeah, and we do have in our package here a recommendation, a recommendation for representing the committee. Thank you for that.
We, we don't have a date yet, though, correct?
We do.
January 7th. January 7th.
January 7th. So I'll move the appointment effective January 7th.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, if, if, we either like to have, if you can't have a ceremony here, or if you're gonna have it at the station, could we get an invite this time?
Sure, absolutely.
We can be part of the festivities?
We will make sure that happens.
That was my call.
He shouldn't be in charge of his own ceremony. Somebody else should be in charge of this ceremony.
He can do it, don't worry. He's got two months to work on it, or three months to work on it.
Yeah, we have several motions that'll, that'll result in this.
Chief Legenda's here, he can get the word out for it.
We'll have a trickle-out, a cascade effect.
Okay. A motion's been made and seconded, but on the, would be, Jim, give us some help here. We'd be appointing Deputy Chief Baldwin to the position of Fire Chief, January 7th, 2024. There's no contract involved here. This is a...
No, we, I did check on that. There has not been a contract. I can check with Attorney Jenkins. He did, says his employee at will, so.
And you're aware of that, I assume.
And he's also aware that the EMA position was combined into it, too. With Chief Legenda, it was a separate thing, but it's combined now with the new chief.
Okay, this is not technically a public hearing, but the Chair is always encouraging comments from the audience. If anybody wishes to speak regarding this appointment, feel free to come to the mic. If not, we'll just proceed. I do want to give people the opportunity. I'll assume that there's no, nobody gonna do that. All right, so a motion has been made and seconded. We understand what we're voting on. And I think it's time to call for a vote. All in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. Best of luck.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Steve for his work on the committee and others.
Appreciate it.
Did a good job. Made the Select Board job easier.
Chairman, just a point of information. I know you mentioned about the swearing-in ceremony. Your vote today is going to trigger a bunch of different things that we have to do within the department now. One, make a new deputy. If a captain makes deputy, make a new captain. So we have several promotional processes to go through. Our goal is hopefully sometime in December to have a ceremony and all of them get sworn in at once. And you guys will be invited.
Good idea. Thank you. Appreciate it, too.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you for everything you've done. Okay, that's a pleasant event tonight. Okay, the next item is B, is request, it was request to have the Board of Selectmen sponsor a warrant article petitioning the General Court to grant an all alcohol beverage license to Westport Gas Mobile stationed at 634 American Legion Highway. Jim, and could you give us an introductory remarks and then we'll introduce the guests?
Sure. So Attorney Levin on behalf of Westport Gas Mobile at 634 American Legion Highway has requested, I guess, the support of the Board of Selectmen for a warrant article placed on the town meeting warrant, requesting a home rule petition for an additional liquor license. This would be an all-alcohol liquor license on premise, not to be drunk on premise license at the station over on 177.
So a a vote then would trigger a, an article, warrant article. And if it's that successful, then that would go before the state or the liquor people? And what happens? Am I correct?
So yes, the warrant article, yes vote would put it on the town warrant for town meeting in May. If that gets passed, warrant article actually authorizes the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court through the Senator or through the representative for a home rule petition to grant an additional license to the town of Westport.
Okay. And are you clear on that, Attorney Levin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we've had discussion. Good, good. Okay, and a no vote triggers, does the defendant have recourse in spite of that?
Yeah, if the Board of Selectmen did not sponsor or place an article on the town meeting warrant, they would have the option of doing a citizen's petition to get on the warrant. It was done that way a few years ago, I think 2018 or 2019. A similar article was done by citizen's petition.
Only requires 10, correct?
For an annual town meetings, 10 signatures, yes.
Okay, well, with that introduction, thank you and your help, too. So please feel free to come forth with your view or your statement or...
Yes. Just for the record, I'm Attorney Michael Levin, law offices at 138 Rock Street in Fort Worth, Massachusetts. I represent John Carrick, John who's not here, Richard and Paul Carrick, who are the owners of a company called Gulf Resources. And they own the premises at 634 American Legion Highway called Westport Gas Mobile. Now, yes, Jim was correct, there was a sponsored petition that was brought before the board, it's the town meeting itself. A lot of people didn't understand when they, unfortunately, I don't know why they have these names of, you know, Gulf Resources and Mobile. They thought these were outside big franchise companies putting this in. My clients live here, they develop here, they have business here, they've been a part of this community for many years, they've owned our premises for about, is it 15? 15 years? You've owned that, well? 12 years, close enough. And they've had a good business, they've had a good reputation, they haven't had problems at premises. They were asking you to ask us to exceed the limitations based on MGL Chapter 138 to allow an additional all beverage license. Before we even came before you, we already spoke with another local resident who's down the street from this premises, Senator Michael Rogers. He thought that premises was a good place to have the ability to have a liquor store there in conjunction with the gas station. And he already has told me that if this board recommends a warrant and it gets approved, he would be happy to sponsor that bill before the legislation felt that would not be a problem because he knew of the Carricks, has known their businesses and their practices in Westport, felt to be a good community. Now, I know you all were talking about the budget before with the Fire Department. Well, what are the advantages by having this facility have a liquor license? Well, you're a tax it for real estate and you tax it based on there's a gas station. A liquor store will also bring extra value and increased value to the premises, which means the tax basis that you will assess to this property will be increased also. Now, not only do they do that, but they also pay for a liquor license, not like the Boston petition right now for exceeding home rule where they're planning to give free licenses to various facilities in Boston. My client expects he'll pay his license every year to continue that. So there's some additional revenue to the town beside the revenue that he is going to, they will get to have in this premises. That's basically why I think this is a good thing for this town. It's not a bad location to have it. You have a very large area of the road that goes by there, so it's not going to be that there are people going to be snopping in and causing any problem for traffic. You already have a gas station there, so you're probably not getting much more participation coming in to pick up liquor. You will have some. But because it's a good-sized highway, it shouldn't be interference for what is out there now. Richard had a few comments before as to what he felt that this was a good opportunity for their business in this time.
Yeah, just given the rising costs of everything, it's just an additional category that we can fit into that location, satisfies our customers' needs and desires. But again, give us a little bit extra help with payrolls and taxes and insurance costs, anything that's going up. So that's kind of what's prompting us to seek the license.
And it's a good location. It's not like there's concentrated businesses like this up and down that area. You know, it's, it's kind of isolated, it's right outside of Fort River. It, like I said, presents itself at a nice intersection where the traffic is controlled by lights and the larger highway that you have that pass by it, that it shouldn't interfere with public traffic out there. I think it's a good opportunity for my clients. Obviously, it's some opportunity for my, for the town to raise some little extra income based on what they'll be producing and the valuation of their property. And we're hoping that you would sponsor the warrant that would allow us to exceed the limitations of Chapter 138.
I was just curious, would you be putting an addition onto the building?
No, existing.
Yeah, I know it's a substantial building.
It's got to be a small section.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
No, the occasion is ideal. I'm there all the time.
Yeah, well, look at that. They'll have the storage in the back where, you know, you'll have to set up the plan when they eventually come back to you with the regular application when they file with the ABCC. But you'll see the location and where the setup will be in the store in the back. They're not planning to make this a tremendous store, but just enough that they'll serve some of their own customers that are coming in and other customers in that neighborhood that will seek a place to go to than running half the way up toward Dartmouth area or running into Fort River.
Right, right. Questions, discussion from the Select Board?
I just, I'd make an observation and a comment. I mean, the Carricks, they've been in town for a lot of years. That facility, when you purchased it, all the upgrades you did to it, I mean, you spent a lot of money, it looks like it fits in our community. And I don't think I've ever seen any kind of issues over there at all, so. I think it's kind of, would be good for your business and be good for the town.
I move the response to the warrant article as requested. A second.
Second? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, motion made and seconded.
And he's not a frequent seconder until he is.
Sounds good to me. Yeah, I would just point out that I support this. And I go there a lot, it's just a great operation, it's clean, people are polite and very helpful. When we exceed, and we've done this before, I should know. And there could be more people who want to do this. That's not your problem, that's something we have to at least consider. This is, I can tell you, if names, people are going to show up and they're going to want the same thing. But there's a process here, and if people follow the process, they may be similarly situated. They may not, and it depends, every case is different. But it is something I just put out there for Select Board consideration. I don't see that as a threat fundamentally. I don't, I'm not even sure I believe in all these rules anyway. I believe in free markets, in free enterprise, in free entry and free exit into a market, so. And the better organizations, whatever they are, gas stations or, you know, closing stores, the more efficient succeed. And others fall by the wayside, that's the way, that's our system. So I support it. So again, this is not a public hearing, but I would welcome any comments from the guests here tonight. If you're so inclined, feel free to go to the microphone and opine. If not, then that's okay, too. And with that thought, since seeing nobody, is there any other questions or comments? I guess it's time to vote. All in favor and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, also. Any opposed, none? The motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is 3C, request from Sharon T. Maderos to waive right of first refusal, requesting us to waive our right of first refusal for 22 Windsor Drive, Unit 16B. I know this isn't the package, but Jim, maybe you can comment on this.
Yeah, so this is a property that's included in the local initiative project, as they call it, LIP. So it's on the state list for affordable housing units. And there's a restriction on that if the property is to be sold in the future, that it would be maintained on that list as a affordable unit. Reading through the, well, it was brought to our attention, but I guess the standard wording in these deed restrictions is that the town has the first right of refusal when it's going to be sold, so the town will have to waive that right so that it could go through the process. It would be the state, DHC, Department of Housing and Community Development that would oversee and make sure that the unit remains an affordable unit. I did speak with them, Paula spoke with them as well. They're aware of this process and they recommended that the town go through. They told us what the process is, so I'd recommend that the board not exercise their right of first refusal and they would be able to move on with the sale of the property.
Okay. Comments, thoughts?
No, it was, the owner had passed and it's the family, and it's going to stay in, you know, in low income. So I would move that we, that we do not show intercenter. What's the proper wording we need for the motion? Waive the right to...
Waive the right of first refusal.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, also. Any opposed, none? The motion carries unanimously, Paula. Thank you. Okay. The next item is a request from the Planning Board to use $30,000 from the matching grant fund for the Snell Creek Conservation Project. Jim, could you give us a background on it that you gave me the other day?
Sure, so this was, this is for the property, the petty property on Main Road. They came before the board a couple of times. There's a CR restriction that the Conservation Commission will hold through the Buzzards Bay Coalition. In the Planning Board, a grant was applied for and they received the $30,000 to help pay or offset some of the costs of that conservation restriction. It's a reimbursement grant, though. So the town has to come up with the money first, and then once that has been done, we can seek reimbursement and the state will reimburse us. So I think there's two options that we're looking at. The first, which is kind of the backup option, which is before the board, was to be used the grant matching funds for the $30,000, which is kind of what it's there for. The only issue is when we get reimbursed, it cannot go back into this fund, so we wouldn't be able to use the grant matching funds for anything else. But I'm asking the board to approve that tonight as a backup. And then we're looking at the Conservation Commission, they have a revolving account for the Wet Man's Protection Fund. They can actually pay for it if it's approved by their commission, and then we can reimburse that account when the money comes in and we still have these funds available for future grant applications, if one becomes available. So what I'm asking the board is to approve use of the matching funds of $30,000 from the grant matching fund account with the hope that we won't have to use it.
We have Mr. Burrus here from the Planning Department. Does he, you wish to say anything, Michael?
I don't have anything.
Okay. We don't want to deny you the opportunity.
I'll move it with the understanding, hopefully we can get it from Conservation so we can go back on that.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor and capable of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, none? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. The next item is really sort of a housekeeping, sure. When we had Jim's review of performance back in July, which was very successful, of course, we put together some standards of performance goals for fiscal year '24, which commenced on July 1st. But we didn't, never handed it out. So we put that in the package for you, it was good list there. I agreed with all of the recommendations. In fact, Jim was more thorough than I would have been even uncovered really all the bases. But, so we wanted to just make sure everybody had that, acknowledged it, that those are the goals that we would be assessing his next performance review upon, come June or July. So there's no vote needs to be taken here, we just want it to be, just be on the official record that we do have standards in place, which we should have, and we do. We're just, we're keeping it a secret from you since July and then just realized it the other day. So are there any questions or comments? Okay, so that's just an informational item. Okay, the next area is our four items. And the first one is 4A, David Cole. You all, everybody knows quite well in our town and has served the town well on many occasions, is going to introduce something for us. David, feel free to come up here.
Okay.
And to present, and I won't go into too much detail here because, I know you will. Do you have your PowerPoint ready to go?
Jim's getting it.
I'm working.
Okay.
He's got it.
He's got it, okay. Whoever.
Well, while he's doing that, David, feel free to jump in. I'm going to ask during the PowerPoint, in the interest of time, we don't ask questions during the PowerPoint, let David finish it, then we'll have plenty of time to ask questions.
All right, well, let me just start off while that's getting set up. I was not aware of this possibility of the residential exemption until last year or two. And I think there's not a general understanding of how it works and, or in many cases, a misunderstanding of how it works. And so as much as anything, I'm here to try to raise the level of awareness and understanding of what this system is. It does, it is used now in probably 40% of the residences in the state, mostly in the large cities. Boston and the cities around Boston use it. And it's also used in some resort towns out on the Cape and Nantucket, so they're kind of similar to Westport. So that it is used, it is really, one of the big research institutes and policy institutes in the state dealing with property tax and land values is the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy up in Cambridge. And I've worked with them in the past on various things overseas, and I have great respect for them. And they've written several articles recently saying that this really is an important feature of the Massachusetts tax that is not available in many other jurisdictions and that it helps to improve the tax and gives local options, local authority to adopt features that can make the tax better. And in this case, the authority for the enactment of this is with the Select Board. And in this case, the authority for the enactment of this is with the select board, it doesn't have to go to a town hall or a townwide vote, it's something that the court of selectmen can decide at the time when they're making the decision about, the annual decision about taxation, tax value, the tax levy, the tax rate that is usually done in November, December. So I'm just here to try to increase the awareness of what it is, and how it works, and how it might work in Westport. So, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, I'd saying, what is it, how does it work, and how would it work in Westport? And, okay, next slide. What is it? And I'll just read through this, you can read along with me, I'm a slow reader. Residential exemption is a specific dollar deduction from the assessed value of all year-round homestead residential properties. So it applies to the year-round properties and not to the seasonal properties. For example, if a $100 exemption would reduce the assessed value of all properties by that amount, then a $200,000 property would have a taxable value of only $100,000, and a $1 million property would have a taxable value of $900,000. So it has much more of an impact on the lower-value properties than on the higher ones. This would result in a reduction of the total taxable value of all residential properties. And, next slide. Because the total assessed value of all residential properties is diminished by the exemption, the tax rate on all residential properties would have to be increased to achieve the same total tax revenue, or to stay at our tax levy limit, which we're always up against because we can't pass an override. Anyway, so, the rate would go up, the increase in the tax rate would apply to all residential properties, but the lower-value properties, those below the mean value for all residential properties, they would still have a net reduction in their tax levy. All seasonal residences and the higher-value year-round residences would have an increase in their levy. So that's what gives you the progressivity in the tax system, it has a much bigger impact on the lower-value properties than the higher value. Okay, how would it work in Westport? Westport has a total of about 8,400 residential properties, and it's estimated that about 1,400 of those are seasonal, and roughly 7,000 are year-round. This is the estimate from the Town Assessor. To realize the same total property tax revenue with a $100, $100,000 exemption on all residential properties would require an increase in the tax rate from the current 8.16, $8.16 per thousand, to a higher rate of $9.67 per thousand, that would be an increase of 18.5% in the tax rate. And, that would, a higher tax rate would increase the taxes levied on all the seasonal properties, but it would also result in a progressive increase in the tax on year-round properties. Above the mean value of $550,000, they'd pay from 1% more to up to 13.5% more on those higher-value properties. Next slide. But on the year-round residential properties below the mean value of all residential properties, the exemption would reduce the tax by 90% on properties valued at $100,000 or less, and by progressively large, they'd have higher tax rates from there on up, but still lower than they had before the exemption was introduced. Residential properties valued at less than $550,000, which is about the mean value, count for 69, nearly 70% of all properties, and they would see a reduction in the tax. The residential properties above $550,000 would pay a higher tax, and they are 31% of all properties. So the tax would have a reducing, the adoption of this exemption would reduce the relative tax of all, of 70% of the residential properties, and increase it on 30%. So that's, that's 70% of, whoop, you got ahead of me. You know, there are, well, there are about 7,000 properties, and so 77% of that is about 5,000 properties that would receive a benefit. Okay, now we're ready. So, the special features of the residential exemption. It's the simplest and most effective way to transform the property tax from a flat-rate tax into a progressive tax. And it's been advocated mainly as a way of helping older retired people who are living in lower-value properties to not have to give up their property. That's one of the main features of it. And it's widely recommended by fiscal and property tax specialists, such as the Lincoln Institute, I think I, I don't know whether I distributed an article, but there's this article, "This simple policy tool can make the property tax fairer and ease homeowner hardship."
You did.
And this comes from the Lincoln Institute. And they, they're among the leading people on that. And it's applied to some 40% of all residences in Massachusetts, Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, et cetera, and it was also applied in the summer seaside communities of Barnstable, Mashpee, Nantucket, Oak Bluffs, et cetera, and the maximum limit is applied mostly in the cities, a 35% exception, in the coastal towns, it averages a 21% exception. And so, it's something that's decided by the select board, it requires additional effort by town officials in the first year, but once it's enacted, why, it doesn't take that kind of effort again. And the main effort is to try to determine which are year-round properties and which are the seasonal properties. And this is something that you enacted at the last town meeting, we enacted exceptions for older people with very low property and very low income values. This goes one step further on it, and I think in the, and it has benefits, it has merits, it's appreciated, is there one more slide in there? Okay, and so, a suggestion for the select board, just to get an idea of how this would work, I'm suggesting that as part of the preparation for setting the tax rate for the new fiscal year, which you do in November, December, that the Board of Assessors could add an analysis of the impact of a 20% residential exemption on the property tax levies by property tax brackets, property value brackets. And the state provides a tool that you can use to do that very easily, it doesn't take a lot of detailed calculations, but you can determine what the tax rate would be and what it would, how it would affect the different values of properties. And I've done, I've played with the tool, and I mastered it fairly quickly, so I think it's not too complicated. Anyway, I think they could do that, and then you'd just see what would be the impact, and make an informed decision as to whether you want to try to introduce this, and you could introduce it in a smaller amount, a 10% reduction, and it takes the same sort of administrative work the first year, but once you've done that, then it doesn't take anything more, and every year you can make a new decision if you want, or you can keep it stable, as most towns ever, just keep it at the same rate. So I think it would provide the select board and town residents a realistic basis for evaluating the impact of such an exemption on the distribution of the tax burden. And so I encourage you to do that, I'll be happy to work with the assessor's office, but they are fully capable. And I'd just add one other footnote, the, one of the reasons that this exemption is advocated is that in some towns, it's found that there's a bias in the assessments, that the lower-valued properties are assessed above their market value, and the higher-value properties are assessed at below their market value. And so they advocate this exemption as a way of correcting for that, and sort of neutralizing the impact of assessments that are biased. I worked with the assessor's office on the data, went through and did an analysis, and on the basis of the assessed values and the recent sales values, why, this bias doesn't show up. Our assessors do a fair and accurate assessment, and so, this, this isn't a reason for introducing this, it's basically an issue of equity and preserving the home properties of elderly, retired people on fixed incomes. That's the end of my story.
Well, thank you, David, by the way, I said, I called David this morning, I said, can you do this in 15 minutes? And he said, I can do it in 15 minutes, and I didn't believe you at the time, but I'm a believer.
Well, okay, well, I'm accustomed, usually it's 50 minutes, you know, class starts at 10 minutes after and ends at when the bell rings.
Well, you've been in front of a crowd, I know a lot, so you know how to do this. I have a couple, I'll call it warm-up questions. It occurred to me, I didn't understand quite the exemption, but, I mean, if, if one, I don't know who one is, some assessor somewhere, wanted to change the rates we charge for property tax at various levels of value, you could just do that, I mean.
You can't.
But, I mean, forgetting the legal, the legalities of it, is it, or maybe, are you saying that you can't do that legally in Massachusetts, this is the only way to do it?
This, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you can't have different tax rates for different properties within the same broad category. This does end up in, with different tax rates between residential, year-round residence, homestead residence, and seasonal residence, you get that as a differential rate, but it, you can't do anything more than that.
You can for residential and commercial, that you can.
Yeah, and you can also adjust, so that you can either increase the rate on commercial and industrial properties, or you can adjust the rate so that you don't increase, that you keep it the same as the residential, homestead resident rate, that, so you don't need to raise the rate on those. Some towns have done that, and many towns around here do have a higher rate on commercial and industrial properties. We don't, we never have, and probably never will, but they're only 7% or 8% of the total tax revenue, and it's, raising the rate on them is not going to help very much. So it's, this is, but this is not going to raise the rates, it only changes the rates on different categories of properties, and different values of properties.
I was going to ask, it's sort of like a, I'll call it a dichotomy, would you point out that where it's employed now in these towns, on the other slide that was there? There are 17 of them, I think. Those towns happen to represent 40% of the residents of the state, and of course.
That's the big cities.
Yeah, that's affected by, it happens to be Boston, and it happens to be Cambridge, so the population is greater. It's not to be confused with 40% of the state, of the people voting for it, they, people didn't vote for it. I mean, their elected representatives did.
Yes.
Yeah.
To introduce this, well, but the, in the places where it's been adopted, it's adopted by the select board or the town council.
Yeah.
It's not by a vote.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, one could look at that item and say, well, you think that 40% of the people in the state voted for this, that hasn't happened. It's 40% of, the people happen to be located in places where their leadership, whoever may be.
Voted for, yeah.
Yeah, it did, okay.
Yeah.
Just a clarification on that. But, on the other hand, there are 351 towns and cities in the state, the Commonwealth, I probably should say, right?
Yeah.
And, so in terms of the percentage of the towns or cities who have adopted this, it's very low, 5% or something, it happens to be heavily populated, but it looks to me like, this really, this idea really hasn't caught on with a lot of towns, relative to the total number of towns.
That's true.
Is there any insight you could give us there, David?
Well, I, the number of towns have looked at it, and Lexington did an analysis of it, and decided not to act on it, and there was a lot of public support for it, but it wasn't approved, I don't know why. I think, in many cases, I just think there's not an understanding of how it works.
Yeah.
And, as I say, I was unaware, I kept thinking, isn't there some way to make the property tax progressum? And I was told, no, 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 and, lo and behold, I discovered, yes, there is. And so I've gone in, looked at it, tried to understand it better, and then looked at articles that advocated, and say that's really a feature of Massachusetts that gives us a good, a way of improving the equity of the property tax.
Okay, I have a couple of other questions, but I didn't want to dominate, go ahead.
So, this is, I think that, I really appreciate how you've simplified this and made it very straightforward, because it's a very, I've been talking to you and Karen Rouse and others for several years about this. There's a couple of things that make it super confusing, so, where you talk about a residential tax rate and a commercial tax rate, and that's just the classification of the property, but a lot of people say, why aren't we taxing seasonal people higher? And you can't, that's the, you can't have a split tax rate in your residential segment, this is the way you do it, you have a reduction and exemption, right? So this is, it's a little complicated, it's a little more complicated, a split tax rate. A couple of the reasons that I totally support looking at the analysis here to show people what that would look like, because I think we need numbers in front of us, like, what does it mean to me if this passes? But, a couple of reasons that I did not really jump on board when David explained this to me, so, the first is that there's no additional revenue to the town here, there is zero extra dollars to the town, it's still the same levy, right? So, we might want to do it for other reasons that David mentioned, but it's not a way to get more money in the budget.
Not to get more.
It absolutely does not give us any more money in the budget. It might have the effect of making a future override more attractive, so if you have reduced people's tax rates, they might then be willing to an override in the future. The other thing that we were kind of concerned about, and this, I think we really need the numbers, is that we have a lot of farm properties, so we have a lot of locations in town where they actually are pretty property-rich locations, that might not be, it's not necessarily, you know, the house on the ocean that you'd be taxing higher, so we were a little concerned. There are also exemptions for agriculture, so I'd really like to see how that plays out, because I don't want to penalize the farmers, or people who have a lot of property just because they have a lot of property. But, but I think we should, I think we should keep talking about it, and I think we should look at it with real numbers, if we had a tool or real people to say, what would this mean to me, I think that would help a lot.
Yeah, I've got a table that does that, but I don't want to run it.
Yeah.
It takes, it would take time in and of itself. But just on the farm properties, most of the farm properties, and that's farms and woodlands, managed woodlands and open space properties, Chapter 61, 621A, 61B, those would continue to benefit from very substantial exemptions, and I think, in practically all occasions, would not be affected by this at all. So, that's all, it just applies to residential properties, and often in farm properties, they separate out the residential component, and then have the Chapter 61 applying to the rest.
Yeah.
So that depending on what the valuation is of the residence, if it's below the mean price of $550,000, mean value, why, it would get a benefit, if it's higher than that, why, but I just, in kind of, you know, 70% of the properties in the town are below the mean, and that, you know, if 70% of the properties had had this benefit so that the effects of the override would have been less for them, that might have affected the vote, I don't know. But I do think that it's, to my mind, it's a way of bringing greater equity and fairness to the property tax, and I push for increasing the exemptions for the elderly and then low income, and that was adopted by you and then by the town meeting, and I think this is just another step in trying to do the same thing, but it hits at a broader range of properties.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, mothers? I just have a couple of other thoughts. This is an exhibit that was in one of your handouts earlier, David, where it shows the value of the properties and how many people are affected by it, it has the 8,000 properties, and the 6,000, 6,600, I guess, who would benefit in 1,700, who would have higher taxes. Now, I think we ought to pay attention to that, these are people who have more expensive homes, we're assuming they have more financial wherewithal.
Well, they may be.
Pardon?
They may be more expensive homes and they may not, they're... They, they may be more expensive homes, and they may not. These are very seasonal residences, or people may have a, a small, low-value cottage that is, they just come to part of the year, so it doesn't necessarily...
I'm just going by your exhibit, I, it doesn't say...
Well, it doesn't, this doesn't break down how many seasonal and year-round residents, we don't have that breakdown, we don't know that. We had a guess for an overall number from the assessor, but that's one of the things that it would be useful to investigate, so you'd know by property value category, how many of those are seasonal, and how many are year-round.
Yeah, so I'd take the point that is, of the seventeen hundred in the more than fifty, five hundred and fifty thou, yeah, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar line, since there are a number of seasonals in there, they, well, they, they wouldn't necessarily all be more than five hundred and fifty thousand, some would be, some would be, and some wouldn't be, I mean, so we don't know, all right. But I, but my, my point was going to be, once I figured out what I'm looking at here, that we do have a number of people who are going to have an increase in their taxes.
Yes.
And, and maybe, that's, if we do this, that's, that's what happens, but it's something that, I don't want to ignore anybody in this process, and I was wondering if, if you know that in other towns where they've gone this way, that they have public hearings, so people can voice their opinion?
I don't know that, but, you know, you just, you also have to remember that the tax rate in Westport is about two hundred and fiftieth out of three hundred and fifteen towns.
Yeah.
And so, even if you do have an increase in the effective tax rate for the seasonal residences, why, they're still probably going to have a tax rate that's going to be lower than almost any other seasonal residence down in the state.
Well, I know that, but if somebody's there, and they already had a big increase because of assessments, which we have had where we live, and then you add on another, let's say it's an eight hundred thousand dollar home, another seven percent, million-dollar home is nine percent, no, that, that's real money, that adds up. I mean, some people will not be happy with that. And, and we don't have a process here, as I understand it, that, that allows for the public, this is not a town meeting item, this is not a, you know, ballot question, this is us deciding.
Yeah.
And, I'd be interested in listening to these people and saying, what, there's always unintended consequences on these things, I found, and I just wondered how other towns handle that, or if they just go ahead and do it, and let the chips fall in their head.
Well, I think, when you're thinking of that, your elected officials make the decision that the people who would benefit are the year-round residences who also are the voters, and it's the seasonal people who are non-voters who would be affected more by the increase in the rate, so that if you're, if you're thinking about impact on voters, why, I think this is likely to have a positive impact.
Well, thirty, thirty percent of your voters, of year-round residents, are going to be, their increase, this what you're, like, year-round people, thirty percent of your year-round people will also see an increase.
They're gonna, but it, it isn't, I mean, it's, again, it's a progressive thing, it's fairly limited in the properties above five hundred and fifty thousand, it gets to be quite substantial, up to maybe fifteen percent for the very highest brackets, so it, it does, they will be increased. They've been hit in the last year or two by the general increase, and, you know, we had a twenty percent jump in the average assessed values after twenty-one, twenty-two, so that's already been hit. How this might, how, and I guess you could get some, you can get some estimates, if you get them to do that, they can dig a little more deeply into the different categories. So I think, generating the information would be useful, to be clearer as to what it is you might be voting for or against.
You could always do a non-binary, too, on a ballot. It makes sense in the communities that did it, the ones with ridiculous values and really super high taxes, I don't know how it would work here, but David, do you know how it works for snowbirds? Like, people that, that live here, that now they're going, that go to Florida and went there, they're not necessarily going to mansions, they're going to a trailer in Florida for six months, and they have a residency in Florida now, and they still have their Westport house. Do you know how it would affect them?
Well, it, it would wreck, it would increase their taxes somewhat, but it would still, their tax rate here would be probably twenty to thirty percent below the average tax rate for the rest of Massachusetts.
And the other concern would be the people not putting money into their houses, because they're getting such a tax break, and we end up getting a lot of rundown houses. I mean, I've only got a two-bedroom, single bath with no garage, because I, you know, I pay reasonable taxes, I, I didn't go crazy. So that, that would be some of the concerns, is the rundown part, we already have a low tax base, so it's just a couple off the top of my head. If anything deserves a committee to look into it, it's probably this, because you're going to do a lot of labor.
Well, but I think this would encourage you to do just the opposite, to go ahead, if you could increase the value of the property with having less impact on your tax.
Not if it's your valuation's going to be a hundred thousand, that's not...
A hundred thousand less.
No, what I'm talking about, you use some at like a hundred thousand dollar range, right? The low-low ones, that get the break?
No.
The lower the value, the more they get break they get, correct?
The more percentage.
The lower the value, the more...
Right, the more percentage.
Yeah. People with a five hundred thousand dollar valuation would get their tax, their tax levy lowered by, I mean, the basis of their tax would be lowered by a hundred thousand, but then they'd have, like, an increase in the tax rate on that lower base, so that the net effect is going to be lower, but not by as much as the really low-value houses.
All right, I got you.
Yeah, it's graduated.
I would think you'd want, Dick, though, to your point, I, even if it's not required that we have, like, public hearings or something, I, I know as a, as a member that would have to vote on this, I would want a little bit more public discussion about it.
Well, I think there should be, and that, but that's why I'm encouraging you to...
Yeah, it's really confusing.
It's very confusing, and why you would need in a lower tax rate town, it's going to be a tough sell, but I don't have any problem looking into it.
Well, it's, it's a low-tax rate town, but when you, when you are poor and have a hundred thousand dollar house...
I got you.
Why?
I got you. Unfortunately, right now apartments are two thousand dollars next door, so it's not, it's not the best time.
Okay. All right, well, this is appreciated, and this was for a discussion, and then we'll do the next steps, whatever we want to do.
Yeah, I'm a textbook into it.
And I think if you can get the assessors, and I think they can easily put together the financial analysis.
Thank you for your legwork, David, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for explaining it.
Okay.
Yes.
But, you know, it is really pretty simple, but it, but it, the waters get muddy.
Yeah.
And, and you're, there are other ways of doing it, that, applying the exemption, that really aren't good, but if you consider all the possibilities, why, again, it just gets confusing.
Yeah.
So I've just focused on one specific way of doing it, and trying to keep it as simple as possible.
That's appreciated.
And I think that's better for me and for you, too.
Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good night, gentlemen and ladies.
Okay, interesting discussion. The next item is also a discussion, Serped has produced, I assume, representatives from Serped are here, who'll introduce themselves, it simply says Housing Production Plan, Goals and Strategies. Jim, do you have any introductory comments before these people introduce themselves?
I don't have any initial comments, no.
Well, welcome aboard, and tell us who you are, and do you have a slide presentation today?
We presented a memo, I don't know if they have it, that we could pull it up.
Yeah, we have a memo in the press yet.
Well, we have, we have it, I don't...
Okay, well, if we don't need to pull it up, then totally fine. I learned a lot about property tax exemptions today, I did not expect that.
Yeah, it is fascinating.
I took notes. Anyways, my name's Taylor Perez, I'm the Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development at Serped, I'm here with my colleague Chris Welch, who's a Senior Comprehensive Planner at Serped, I assume you folks are familiar with Serped?
We are.
Love that, love that.
I've been a Serped rep for twenty-one years, unfortunately, we're not even present, so you don't see any of it.
Excellent. It's very nice to meet you, I do your name instantly, I have seen that many times, well, it's nice to meet you. We are here because we have been working on a housing production plan for you folks for about a year or so, are you folks familiar with the Housing Production Plan? Yes, no?
No.
Kind of, okay.
Not really, no.
It is a five-year plan focused on the production of subsidized affordable housing, it is enabled by Chapter forty-B, and has regulations under seven sixty C M R fifty-six.
Forty-B, I understand.
Everyone knows their forty-B legislation, right? Everyone loves that, and so we've been working on that for about a year, we've been updating it from, I believe, your twenty-eighteen, when was the last one that you folks had done? It is a five-year plan, again, focused on subsidized affordable housing production, but we also look at market-rate housing, and kind of just the general broad-sweeping housing, so we view it a lot more holistically. We met with the Planning Board on September nineteenth, and presented these housing goals and strategies, they're up now, look at that. We have highlighted any changes that resulted from the Planning Board meeting in green, and we're just here to kind of talk with you folks, because both the Planning Board and Select Board need to adopt the Housing Production Plan, for it to go up to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly D H C D, for approval. So, we can just walk through that, unless you folks have any questions?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, okay, great. So, let me pull it up, there are four housing goals, that is a requirement in the Housing Production Plan. The first one is to implement zoning changes that enable the creation of new subsidized and missing middle housing choices. The second is to create housing options and pursue programs that help underserved populations continue to live in Westport. This was changed from the previous Planning Board meeting comments, because we talked a lot about displacement concerns, and we wanted to have a more broad-sweeping goal. The third goal is to ensure new residential developments incorporate, preserve, and highlight Westport's open spaces and natural resources, and the fourth goal is to continue to produce S H I-eligible units to achieve the Commonwealth's required amount and support communities in need. For those who may not be familiar, S H I. stands for subsidized housing inventory, all communities in Massachusetts are required to have ten percent, you folks are at three point eight-seven or so, right now.
Yeah.
No, I mean, they're lower, in our region, for sure, but they definitely want to get that number up. And so, does anyone have comments or questions about the goals, before we go into strategies? That's kind of where the meat is.
How does this dovetail with the state, relating to commuter rail?
Mm-huh.
Where, you know, we need to have more of different kind of housing here, is, is this...
Section three A?
Yeah, does this feed into that, or work with that, is it complement that?
It can, I, I view it as complementing, we've worked with communities who are obligated under Section three to have multifamily housing, or, excuse me, multifamily zoning by right. If they want to talk about Section three A in the plan, we do, if they don't, we don't. It can, again, dovetail into that, if you want to discuss it more, I know you folks right now are not subject to three A, as far as I'm aware, I think...
Not yet.
Not yet.
We think...
That's what we all say, I think, we, we encourage a proactive approach to it, just because it's also just not a bad thing to encourage, but as far as we are aware, there is no immediate, you know, obligation from you folks at this time, but it can.
Right, thank you.
Of course. So, there are nine strategies, again, any changes that kind of came up after the Planning Board meeting are highlighted in green, I'm just going to run through the top, top line, and then if we want to talk about the more detailed bullet points within it, we definitely can do so. The first strategy is collaborating with proactive housing developers to create S H I-eligible units on town-owned land, again, to get your S H I. up. The second is to implement key zoning amendments to support new housing opportunities, including duplexes, triplexes, multifamily, first-time homebuyer opportunities, et cetera, this is a pretty hefty one, so, again, we can talk about this in more detail if you folks want. The third, and a new one after our Planning Board meeting, is to implement housing preservation and stabilization tactics to prevent further displacement in Westport's environmental justice neighborhood. I know this come up, you guys have an E J. community, it's a rectangle in the northern part of town, we definitely want to focus on some displacement concerns that are coming up there. Another one that was added from the Planning Board is to create an adult retirement community bylaw, I know age-restricted housing is a big deal here, we can look at some model bylaws to make some suggestions. The next strategy is to continue to allocate funding from the Community Preservation Act tax surcharge, and pursue other funding opportunities to support accessibility modifications for folks who wish to age in place. The next one is to continue community outreach to the Housing Trust, to promote the need for affordable housing, and help to spell myths to solidify local support, this came directly out of your previous Housing Production Plan. And then we have some more cookie-cutter ones that we typically put in every Housing Production Plan, these last three, investigate opportunities for adaptive reuse, to redevelop underutilized municipally-owned lands and buildings, review the availability of town-owned and tax titled properties to work in tandem with adaptive reuse goals, and then explore avenues to allow homeowners to de-restrict existing units and accessory apartments. This is actually not a cookie-cutter one, this last one, but it's a, it's a lower priority, because it's very complicated, so.
Now, is this something you, the, the Planning Board is very active in this process? In fact, we had, we have Michael from the Planning Board, as you know, but I'm trying to discern what, what should Select Board be doing, what is the Planning Board be doing, how do we coordinate, how do we make sure we know what each other is doing?
Right. I mean, so again, we met with them on the nineteenth, that was actually our first time meeting with them, we've done a lot of, we did a survey, that was open for three months, we did some site visits in town, that took a little bit, that was over the summer, on a very hot day, beautiful, beautiful day. And then we brought them again to the Planning Board, and I think we're looking for the same guidance from you both, again, because both of you folks or boards will need to adopt this plan.
Yeah.
Essentially, just making sure that everyone's collectively on the same page, everyone feels that we're accurately representing Westport's housing needs, and that we are proposing strategies that you folks feel are achievable, comfortable, authentic, et cetera.
Mm-hmm, okay, that's fair.
Mm-huh.
Others have questions? I don't want to be the one who does all the talking around here, you know?
Nothing wrong with that.
Well, people will get bored with that after a while.
Fair point.
Well, I, I mean, to me, you've answered the questions that I have, and we do have a very energetic Planning Board that we work with, and they tell us what we got to do, a number of these.
Right.
So I don't have any further questions, unless others do, and I think it's, it's pretty clear, I'm somewhat familiar with this, we've had such presentations before.
Right.
And, yeah, we would like to do more, no question about it.
Right.
So, anybody else?
Can you talk more about, so if we, so this is the draft of the housing goals and strategies, so what...
Yes.
So, what is the action that we would want to take, and then like, what's the next thing that happens?
Sure, so essentially, once we kind of get both the Planning Board and Select Board's blessing, we'll call it, it's not necessarily, it can be formal if you folks choose, it's just more like, you guys are going in the right direction, we will proceed with looking, so particularly the items in green that have come up from the Planning Board meeting, we want to spend a lot more time with, I believe we're actually, should all things go according to plan, we'd like to award an additional Small District Local Technical Assistance Grant for twenty-twenty-four, to carry this project out through June or so, because, again, a lot of things were brought up at the Planning Board meeting that we wanted to give adequate attention to, particularly the displacement concerns, and so, the next steps would be, we go back, we take a closer look at the Planning Board's comments, or, again, if you folks bring up anything additional, we will begin writing probably early next year, once we've gotten sufficient data that kind of addresses all of those issues, and then it will come back to you folks in the form of a text draft, the narrative, all the data laid out, you folks will take a look at it, again, provide us some feedback, comments, et cetera, and then once everyone is collectively on the same page, we do what we call like a pre-adoption review, where we send that draft up to the E O H L C., the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and they let us know if we're missing anything that's going to be required for it to be approved by the office, and if it is, we let you folks know what they tell us, if not, you folks adopt it, and then you send a letter to E O H L C. stating that both boards have adopted, and they will approve it, and you have a Housing Production Plan for five years.
But then what's the benefit of having a Housing Production Plan?
So, one, again, you have a great plan, now that we wrote, that we love, that helps you kind of guide your housing goals for the next five years or so, there are actual legal benefits to it, if you produce a certain number of housing units, it's usually point five to one percent of your total year-on housing stock, you can get the benefit of safe harbor, essentially, if you get a forty-B that you folks are not feeling is great, you have the right to deny it for a period of one to, I think it's one to two years max, from the time of when you show the permits that have been approved.
So, let's say we produce a good plan, and we get going on it, what would be different in, in Westport? Would we have more low-income housing, more multi-unit housing, more apartments vis-à-vis single-family residences, what would that look like in real life?
Sure, I think, one, you'll have some more housing diversity, and you'll have more housing options, particularly in the Route Six area, given when we drove around, and all of our work with Michael, and the Planning Board and whatnot, we just understand that to be the best area to improve, or, you know, expand housing diversity in town, and then there's also sewer opportunities there, that, again, can allow for greater densities. You might have some more streamlined zoning processes, for example, the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw came up at the Planning Board meeting, I think there might be some confusion around that, because there's a threshold at which subdivisions become subject to the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw, that might be changed if we make a suggestion about it. Let's see, what else? What are all the good things that could come out of this? Again, you've...
That's a pretty good list, yeah.
Yeah, right, just there, again, you increase your S H I., that's always great, once you folks are above ten percent, that safe harbor becomes, you know, in the, in the length of time that you're over ten percent, and the twenty-twenty census was just updated, so you folks will have at least seven to ten years of that, once you get over your ten percent, or I should say until twenty, thirty or so. I mean, again, otherwise, I think, preservation and stabilization... I mean, again, otherwise, I think preservation and stabilization was a huge thing that came up at the planning board. Again, the displacement concerns, again, with short-term rentals, increasing housing prices and whatnot. I know we were talking about that earlier with a previous presentation, that housing is just at exorbitant prices right now. Increasing affordability is a huge, hopefully, benefit that comes out of the suggestions from this plan.
Yeah, as an example, we, you know, require police to reside in town, and a lot of them can't afford to live here.
Mm-hmm. Right.
That's a problem. It's a recruiting problem.
Right.
Okay, questions, comments?
My feeling too is, and I'm glad you didn't come in.
Happy to be here.
Is to get a plan that works and something that we can implement.
Right.
And I know you're working closely with Michael. I mean, I'm glad that you came before us to explain that to us.
Of course.
Something, you know, we had one in 2018, and what were the benefits of it? We put this effort in and have something that we're all on the same page. We move forward with it, especially with the stuff that we got coming up.
Right.
Sewer and adjacent communities.
Right.
I think it's time.
Yeah, for sure.
Good thoughts. Anything else?
I think they did great work. I think we have an awesome planning board. They've got some really good things that they were able to include in here.
Absolutely. It was incredibly helpful for us.
We're very fortunate to have them putting...
Absolutely.
Don't worry, Michael.
Couldn't do without him.
You have a man.
Oh, Manny.
Yeah, he was there.
A couple minutes more at a time for other reasons.
He was the one who told us to come here, and we were like, absolutely, for sure. For sure.
Sounds good. Good work.
Okay, well, I guess those are our questions. We thank you for presenting, and this is very helpful to us, and we're looking forward to it.
Awesome. We'll be in touch in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Well, Jeff, we said hi.
Absolutely. I'll see him tomorrow. I'll let him know. Have a good night, you folks.
You too. Okay, that was very informative. And next item is really for Jim to lead us, and this will probably be a standard item here going on, or at least every other meeting or something, to have a report on the budget process and what we're running into, because we have that other group of finance committee, ourselves and school, who we met the other night. So there's a lot going on here in the wake of the override failure and what we got to do in the budgetary constraints. So Jim, I'll turn it over to you to...
Yeah, so this is just the introductory, I guess, presentation, but just an update to the board of selectmen as to where we are. We prepare a yearly calendar of the budget process, timelines for town departments, timelines for me, timelines for the board of selectmen, the finance committee, deadlines when things have to get in in order to make town meeting. So that is in your packet.
Yep.
Letters have gone out to the department heads in various departments through town, requesting that they prepare a draft budget, and the guidance has been similar to what's been requested in previous years. Pretty much level services, level funded, if possible, to include a 2% increase in the salary line items unless there is a negotiated contract that states differently. So that would be the starting point as the budget process moves forward. Those are supposed to be in by the end of October. We've also requested of the departments a capital improvement plan that we're due, I think, last week or the week before, and we're still waiting on a couple of departments to finish that up. In addition, we've also asked all the departments to review their fee structure. We're going to compare that with some of the surrounding towns to see where we are in relation to our fees as compared to theirs, and hopefully, some way out of where I could be able to request that the board of selectmen hold a hearing at some point, hopefully in December, to adjust some of those fees. It should be noted that even if we do increase fees, even if we increase them substantially, it's not going to significantly impact the budget. The fees that we collect here in town are relatively small part of the local receipts that we receive as part of the budget process, but we just want to make sure they're consistent and they're up to date. Some of the departments over the years have been right up to date. Some of the others have kind of lagged behind a year or two, so we'll get everybody up to date. Just a couple of things that we pointed out at the last meeting. New growth. We expect new growth to be a little bit less this year than we've had the previous two years. Two years ago, we based it on an 18-month period because the assessors changed their process. We had 18 months of new growth. Last year, we had an exceptional year where we had additional new growth that based on, partly based on the assessors just going back and reviewing a lot of properties and reassessing properties and picking up additions or improvements that had not been identified previously. We also had the COVID years where a lot of work was being done around properties, where we had 847 last year and almost 700 the year before. We're probably going to be closer to 400, 500 this year.
Jim, we want to double-check those numbers because there's still a big push here. I see a lot of construction going on. You know, ever since COVID, people are looking to go for the country in case they're stuck in their house again, it seems. I don't know. Have you checked with them yet, Mr. City?
I did, and it's still very early in the process, but they're being more cautious. The assessors being a little bit more cautious this year than we have the last couple of years, so.
All right.
I'm hoping for a bigger number, but we will see. Chapter 70. Last year, we went from a minimum aid community. We bounced out of that category, which gave us an additional Chapter 70 state funding. I believe we're still going to be in that category. Now, whether that's an incremental step, whereas we got about $500,000 additional last year for Chapter 70, I don't see that additional step this year, but it'll be a little bit more than what we received previous years. The local receipts we closed out this year came in well. We budgeted about 80% of the actual. We were previously at 95%, 96%, which is very high, so our numbers are becoming more realistic and a little bit more conservative, which gives us a little bit of play if we meet it. And when I say a little bit of play, this is 50,000, 100,000. This isn't going to be anything significant that's going to change what the budget process is. We have investments, which has increased last year. Went from 67,000 up to 300,000 last year, just investment income because interest rates are going up. So that'll be a little bit of an increase. Other things are leveling out. Excise tax for cars has leveled out last year. It actually decreased a few thousand dollars from the previous year, so we don't see that bumping up this coming year. And that's our big local receipt number. That's about 50% of our local receipts, so that's been going up, $200,000, $300,000 a year. We expect that to be level, so overall, I think we're going to be, overall, budget-wise from what we take in, we're going to be consistent with what we had in previous years. It's just that costs are increasing here in town. Salaries are increasing, and we're just not keeping up. Yeah, that's the basic. It's still very early in the process. We don't have a lot of numbers yet. As the numbers come in, we will update the board, keep you informed as to where we are.
And I mentioned the group that we've... I don't know if we have a name for the group, the budget group with the finance committee. It's really a finance committee meeting that we attended, and then we posted ourselves, but actually, we posted on behalf of the audit committee. Jim was there, Shana and myself. And it was a very productive meeting, in my view. I mean, a lot of questions that still have to be resolved. But I do point out that I was looking at the East Bay newspapers online today. Sometimes there's an article there that's going to appear in the print in a couple of days. You have a photo there. You get a lot of press, but it's a nice recap of what took place at the meeting, and a lot of detail, actually, what the school said and some of your comments. So that's helpful to go there and look at that. And we'll be meeting again. That was not determined. It'll probably be in the context of a finance committee meeting, and we'll show up with the same group and do that and see if that's helpful. I'm optimistic. We'll get a lot of issues resolved there, but I did want to mention that. So anyway, I guess that's anything else?
Yeah.
So I think that, Jim, you do a tremendous job of balancing the budget, and I know that the department heads are asking for the minimums, and you're working with them to get, to live within what we've got. But I really think that we need to be very clear with the taxpayers what we're missing out on, right? Like, we, I think that the police and fire department are kind of the easy ones because they can say, minimum recommended staffing for a population of this size should be X, and we're really at Y. So I think, I think you kind of have that, but I think we need numbers like that wherever we can get them. So if it's, you know, in Massachusetts, the highway department is usually X percent of whatever. Like, I know that these are sometimes kind of difficult exercises to do, but we really need to know where we're ranking here. And one of the examples that I used in that meeting, when I joined the FINCOM, you know, 12, 15 years ago, we did not fully fund the library at the minimum state certification levels. You do not have to fund the library at the minimum certification levels. There's repercussions if you don't. So if you don't fund it at the minimum, you lose access to the sales library network, and that's a really valuable program. So I'm not advocating for that, but I, we've talked in the past years about having a part-time veteran service officer. Nobody really wanted to do that. I don't want to do that. But some of these things, I think we really need to talk to the departments. If we have to find, you know, $500,000, where are we going to find it? And I know that, you know, in the past, like, when I first started on the FINCOM, I was really in favor of, okay, what is your level funded budget? What is your level service budget? What is a 10% reduction in your budget? And I don't think we're going quite that far yet, but I think we really need to be thinking about that. If we reduce your budget by... I know it's not worked, it doesn't work that way with really small departments, right? But I just want to make sure that we're calling that out. And so highway is a really big one, where the staffing levels of highway have just plummeted, and a lot of people, they complain about the grass being mowed, but then they don't see the plummeting numbers, or cemetery is another one. So I really want to encourage the department heads to talk about, we have to do this, and, you know, maybe we could cut here. And I know it's going to be hard to pull out of them, like, what you could cut if you had to, but I really want to make sure that we're talking about the departments like that.
Why don't we also do a chart of all the money that now goes into revolving instead of the tax funds, and people voted for that town meeting. COA, not just the COA, COA Beach, there's a bunch. We've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars, so they could be kind of self-sufficient. That affects our budget. So maybe have that chart available too.
Because I'm not as optimistic as Mr. Ferrera is after that meeting, because it's pretty clear to me that the school department is not going to be able to meet their needs at the level plus 2%. So, you know, where I'm pretty sure Jim can make it work with the instructions he gave for his department, I don't think that the school side can do that. And the only way to get the school more money is less money from the town. So I'm also not advocating for that, but that's why we need to make sure that we're really clear about what it would mean if we had a cut. Like, maybe we're not going to mow the grass anymore, or maybe we're... I don't even know. Cemetery is a bad example because some of that's, you're right, they're going into these different funds that are...
Budget, yeah.
Yeah. But I, I'm glad you were optimistic.
Well, my optimism may fade after a while, but I'll go into it with a good attitude.
Good for you.
And there was one thing, and I don't know if I mentioned it the other night, Jim, but I think I mentioned it to you separately, but I was looking at two sources of new money, but it's not really new money. But thinking of the five-year context, because we were talking about a five-year plan. Way back when, I harken back to our time in the finance committee, where the actuary said that we would reach a point where the pension, the Bristol County Pension Fund, would be basically fully funded. And then COVID came along, and I think that knocked us off for a couple of years, but there would be a point, maybe in the next five years, where our obligation to the fund is less financially every year. That would be some funds that we hadn't thought about. And then I was thinking about ARPA. We do have to figure out where all that money is going to go and have it spent by whatever the date is, '26. But ARPA, you can't use our... Well, the rules have changed, I guess. A, we should take advantage of as much flexibility that's in the rules. And secondly, when we purchase a capital item, that oftentimes frees up money that can now be used for operating income, so it's like a close cousin. So that's sort of new money, but it's not used directly. We can't supplement salaries or anything like that. But if you can buy a number of capital items, I mean, every town meeting we have, I don't know, $700,000, $800,000 of capital expenses, if a lot of those can be handled by ARPA, then we have that money for something else. So that's not new money, but it is kind of a close cousin. So anyway, yeah, we have a long way to go. I acknowledge that, but we're trying best we can. If I can come back to the schedule, Jim, I just want to highlight for the benefit of the select board a couple of areas. Most of the dates on here are relating to Jim, the departments, and getting materials, and so on and so forth. The first date that I think is a critical one for us, and they're all important dates, by the way, December 18th is the town administrator's recommended budget to be submitted to us, which that's when we get that, have a first look at that, and that'll tell us some things.
We run on Christmas?
Yeah, and then, I mean, become a pessimist after that, but we'll wait till December 18th. Hold off as long as we can.
Your optimism.
Then we have January 8th, select board budget discussion. Now, of course, we'll be discussing it as soon as we get it. And then throughout January, that continues. Then that gets into the town articles, of course. Then, of course, the important date we just mentioned the other night is when we have to get the, our budget to the finance committee, and that's March 10th. It's on the last...
February 20. February 20 is the budget.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's right. Yeah. What am I looking at for the March 10?
March 10 is the warrant.
That's the warrant. All right. Yes, I misunderstood the date. You're correct. February 20th, that's the date, and then we go from there. And so on and so forth, and March 25th being the approval of the warrant. So things are going to get busy. They always do. Okay, anything more on this important item?
That's all I have for you on the budget.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any other questions, Jim? Next item is D. This is a clarification. We had the no-wake zone vote, and the vote for the no-wake zone failed, two in favor, three opposed. Don't take any of my remarks to mean I'm unhappy with the vote. I'm not at all. I looked at it afterwards. I was saying, well, what happened here? And particularly as respects the rule we have in place, the 400-foot rule that was enacted by the town some years ago, it's a rule. It's not a bylaw. Now, there's a state statute too regarding the distance from...
It keeps going back down.
Oh, cutting you off here?
Dragger on the table.
So Jim and I were talking about that, and I was wondering if we ought to reconsider our action, but then I realized that that's not necessary. I think the vote taken on the item as presented, which was basically the creation of a new wake zone, although I voted for it, it's okay that it failed. That's all right. That's the process, and there were reasons for that. I don't second-guess anybody's decision or their vote. But we thought we may have made an error because we already have a no-wake zone, and I thought we were talking more about designating that with buoys, one or two, whatever it was. So could you give us the clarification, the no-wake zone clarification? And do we have to do anything else, or we just...
No, I don't think any...
Let Chris Leonard work with the...
I think Chris is still working with the HAM advisory group to see if they can come up with a different option, along with some of the neighbors down there. But as it stands right now, there's a 400-foot requirement where anything within 400 feet, you can't have a personal watercraft going above headway speed. So essentially, there's a no-wake zone there already. What was before the board of the last meeting was to create a new no-wake zone in that area, and that didn't pass. So they may still be able to put up a buoy that says, "Proceed at headway speed" in this area without creating a no-wake zone. No, no-wake zone, new no-wake zone.
Yeah, we don't need a new one. Don't need another one.
Right.
And isn't it true that it's 400 feet from each shore, right?
That's correct.
So when you get high enough up on the river, it's all no-wake zone, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, just as it funnels down. Yeah, so we thought that the clarification was the decision stands, there's no beefy or anything like that. But then those rules, because the town adopted those rules, Chris has authority to enforce those rules. So Chris doesn't need to come back here and ask for our permission to put a buoy up. That's his decision, per the rules that were created, and his authority to manage that. So we wanted to clarify that, so if he does it, that's fine. And if anybody has a problem here, then we would have him come in and talk about it. But we think our conclusion was, from looking at those rules, that he has that authority. And if it was only the buoy we were talking about, then he could go ahead and do it without any advice from us, and he can come to us and tell us about it, or if he wants our view or our opinion, that's fine, but he's not obligated to do that under those rules. So that's really the clarification.
Yeah, it's part of the reason why I voted against it. There's already enough in place.
Yeah. Apparently, you had a clearer perception of that than I did, because I was kind of confused between the buoy and the...
Like I said, we used to have marine patrol. They used to go around there.
Yeah, you did say that. So, okay, so that's the no-wake clarification. Understood? Yeah, you did say that. So, okay, so that's the no-wake clarification. Understood?
Mm-hmm.
Got it? All right.
Don't go fast with a wake in that area.
Right, head speed.
Unfortunately, it's just like our streets. You're always going to have somebody...
Yeah, well, that's true. All right. So we just wanted to clarify it. All right, moving on. Is there a town administrative report? Did I see one?
Yeah.
There is, yes.
Why didn't I see that? Well, continue.
So on Friday, November 3rd, 1 o'clock, there is a groundbreaking ceremony for the new Diamond Vocational District, New Diamond Vocational School. That's at 1 o'clock on Friday, November 3rd. Refreshments will be served at 12:00 noon in room 251. If anybody's interested in going, let me know, and I will get word out to the committee.
If you don't mind, and others are welcome, but I'll attend on that day. I've been involved in Diamond, and it'll be fun. So we got the base covered, but others can certainly come. And if somebody else wants to go, believe me, that's...
That might depend on the workload that we can handle.
Yeah.
The wage study, personnel board has it narrowed down to two companies. They're interviewing them on Thursday night, so hopefully, we can get that moving within the next couple of weeks. Town meeting zoning articles, these were the articles that were presented at the last town meeting in May. They were just approved by the Attorney General's Office, and I know the planning department has updated the bylaws, and those bylaws can be viewed on the town website. PFAS settlements, this came through town council. They recommended that we join the class-action suit for, these are the four, other chemicals that are in the water, the small, I guess, plastic-type chemicals or particles. We have drinking water supplies here at the schools, the annex, town hall, council on each, and those are considered public water supplies, as well as the Route 6 water line. So we did sign up for that. Where that goes, not quite sure. It's very early in the process. There may be some, there are some settlements that were offered by 3M and Dupont, Coverda and Schmoor's Company for the public water systems. How much we would get, and it's not known right now, but at least we're part of the class-action suit. And if there is funding or an award settlement out there, we would be entitled to a portion of it. Westport River Watershed has a cleanup on Gooseberry next Saturday, October 21st at 10:00 a.m. And then just the police chief applicants, the in-house applications are due Friday. So we will try to schedule a meeting with that committee next week to start the initial review. And that's all I have.
And I did find your report. I was looking in files. It's in a separate area. Okay, thank you. Any questions, Chris? Okay. All righty. Next item is the approval of minutes. Manny?
I'm going to hold them off till next...
Okay. Those are the ones of September 25th. Okay, report on the bill warrant, always exciting.
Exciting, yeah.
Looking good. It was awesome. I signed it.
Thank you. Okay, and again, I'm your substitute there, so...
Actually, I missed a page.
Ooh, ooh, I don't know. We have to rethink this.
I publicly confessed to that.
I don't know.
I have to sign my name along.
All right. Like I say, you do have a substitute in case you... The next item is liaison reports. We'll start from this end. Manny, any suggestions for future, and then the discussion items?
I think on the water and sewer and talks on the ARPA money, I think one of the, one of the things we got earmarked from Senator Roderick's was to get shovel-ready projects. So it's my understanding that Route 6 is now shovel-ready, and we got a couple of small permits. But I was reviewing that PFAS grant that we went for for the MACOM, and I guess we're not going to apply for that PFAS grant until next year because we don't have a shovel-ready project. So at the end of the last plane, Bob had been away for a little bit, so I asked Bob, I said, "Well, Route 6, the plan's complete. Why can't we file for that grant this year?" The worst they can do is turn us down. So I believe he said he was going to send an email out on that, but if we could possibly follow up on that, make sure something was done, I sure would like to get denied versus not applying for it, something that we'd get. Because one of the things with this PFAS stuff, and I had been bringing up with the Board of Health with some of those Title V upgrades that they were doing, I mean, those wells were identified in the integrated water plant to have these chemicals. So this is something that's been going on, you know, for a very, very long time. And we're kind of, so it's another thing I like, I would hope that we could get the Board of Health on board. You know, I know they're doing a lot of the testing, some of the neighborhoods that we got problems in with up next to the church, on Sanford Road, and see if we can, you know, get them on board for trying to get some of this grant stuff going versus some of the stuff that they're going for. Not to change the subject, but the meeting on the Watapa that I wanted to attend, but we didn't get to because we had the Select Board meeting last week. So that was one of the determinations over there, you know. The problem, as we know, is phosphorus. It's not nitrogen over there. So the Board of Health got a bunch of letters out, a bunch of properties out there, that we should be really looking into soaring that area versus doing them septic. And some of them have already done, and they're like a lot of money. So we're going to get pushed back when we try to put sewer in that area, and I think that's some of our pushback now. The four rivers side, the Tivern side, they're, again, sewer already in that side of the top. So I think one of the things when we're looking, the rest of that earmark for sewer and water, since Route 6 is complete, I know we've spent some of it on Rogers, but if we could get a couple more of these projects permitted, not permitted, yeah, permitted, so we have a shovel-ready project. I'm not as concerned about trying to get money raised at town meeting. I'm more concerned to try to get as much federal money as we can while we're offering it. Because we know how hard it is to get money at town meetings. So I think when Senator Roderick's earmarked that money, we got a certain amount of time to get spent, let's spend it. I mean, let's get those, like, that MACOM, we could have, if we had that ready. I mean, hopefully, we'll have that ready for next year. If we get denied, if we get it, it doesn't mean we can't apply for another one next year. We should be, like the Mass Works Grant, so we should be applying one for every year. So...
Is this an item for a future meeting, or is this just something you're working?
Yeah. The Roman Pond's going to be a lot more in-depth because it's going to, they're going to need pump stations, so it's going to be interesting, but certainly get ready for us.
That's also a drinking one, I think. And we got four rivers, you know, that's four rivers supply.
Right.
Backup. So I think we have a, and I also, Terry Sullivan has offered to come into one of our next meetings to try to help us look for funding avenues for that. I think he'd be, I think he'd be great help. Not, just boys are tired already, but you know, you've worked...
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else, Manny? Thank you.
On bike, we're going to be putting forward a Mass Trails grant. The Gail will be putting that together. I think it has to go by us, the board. That was something that we voted on our last meeting. I also just forwarded you, just so the board is aware, as we go forward with the layout of the old France property that goes along the trail, just see if it could happen in your email for a reference if you ever need it. Sherped, was there anything over the top? Jim White usually does a really good job of bringing up our situations in town and bringing it up for discussion. So everything's moving forward with that. Nothing over the top yet. They're still doing their studies, including bikes. So we're in a, we're in a few different studies to try to get things going.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it for now.
At my end, just the Audit Committee meeting. We did have a meeting last Monday, and we were simply focusing on any cleanup from prior management letters. There basically weren't any. There are some items that naturally carry over, they're multi-year projects. But we really focused on the timelines because in the last couple of years, primarily because of COVID and our own problems, as you recall, in our Treasurers Department of yesteryear, we were late in getting our audit done. So there is a target date of December 18th, which is the week the auditors will come in and wrap up. They're in here now from time to time, and gathering information. Nicole Batello-Pearsall is sending a lot of material to them, as is Sue Brayton. They both reported it's going well, and we expect to have it pretty much concluded in late December. We probably won't see a report until January, but that's significant improvement over the past year. So that's the good news there. We will have another meeting in December to be on top of that and have our auditors come in and see what else they need to get it done, and they're very desirous, as we are, of getting it done on time this year. And along the way, there would be a certification of free cash in that process, so that's, this has importance. And that's all I have, I guess. Shawna?
We talked about the Finance Committee meeting that we attended earlier. The Climate Resilience Committee continues to work in multiple tracks. There's a lot of focus on, or they've started focus on historic properties, the impact of climate change on historic properties in Westport, but also the health component. So they're looking at, and emergency management planning. So lots of different tracks going on for climate resilience, but nothing super specific for this board yet. I think that's all I had.
That's it? Thank you. Ian?
I just had affordable housing. We talked a little bit about trying to find somewhere to do a affordable housing project, but I think right now, we're looking for areas, see if we can find some properties, either a house next to landlocked land, or hopefully towards the north end, towards Route 6, and probably needing to wait until the sewer and water comes further up in order to be able to really make a difference. Because although the Habitat for Humanity House, which is moving along, and they had a great fundraiser, that's only two units, and it's, I guess, very far.
Okay, anything else?
Don't forget, School Street is still hanging up there, too. Keep pushing and then backing that block.
I mean, I always kind of think of people that came and speak with that, if there's any areas, you know, built for that type of property.
That'll dovetail with the plan, is it?
They found one, but it was a lot of wetland. But they're still...
Forget what Mike Barry's property is.
I brought that up the other day.
It's got six units.
Is that it? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. The next item is for the public, but there's no public here. Val, comments and statements, Val? No? Okay. Vacancy list, well, same thing, I'm saying the same thing that Shawna said, and she would share, there's plenty of vacancies, and we do appreciate all the people who have come forth. And we have filled a number of these along the way. The topic's not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I'm not aware of any. Jim, Paula, none? Anybody else?
The personnel board isn't even on here right now.
Remember how bad they were?
Yeah, they came a long way, didn't they? All right. So there is no executive committee meeting tonight. We'll see you a week from, two weeks from yesterday for our next meeting. So now it's time for...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Or second.
Motion made in second. It all favors AI.
Aye.
We are adjourned.